Here.
We have a call, thank you.
Good to go. And our invocation speaker today is Pastor Omar Palmer, Seventh Day Adventist Church. Welcome, thank you. You all stand.
Let's pray. Our Father God, we are so honored that we could come before you at the first meeting in this calendar year 2017. Thank you for all that you've done for this city in 2016. We look forward to what you will do this year through those you've appointed to serve. Father, we want to especially thank you today for the fact that you were overseeing what happened over the weekend. The flooding situation that has taken place, we pray for those who are impacted, those who are still in the midst of it, and those who are going through recovery. We pray that you will be with them and you will help us and give us the resources, the strength, and everything possible to support them in every way possible. Father, we thank you for all that you've done, and we're committing now this meeting, the plans for this council, for this city, for our community, for this entire year into your hands. You're capable, and you've appointed these individuals. Now bless them in their remarkable way, and now take control of what we do and say today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you remain standing, put the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Adams, would you lead us in the pledge? Please join.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll open up this meeting with public comment. If you'd like to speak today, please fill out a card when you work. I do have one card, and that'll be anonymous. Come on up. Welcome. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm speaking anonymously because of the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are receiving from law enforcement and the courts. I spoke with Steve Driscoll, the city manager, several months ago, and he stated, he looked me in the eye and stated that he would investigate the courts. The city staff attorney was present, and she had written down our complaints that the municipal courts are destroying child abuse court case files. He's not responded to me, and so we went ahead and conducted our own investigation. We spoke with Judge McCarthy, and she said she's not been investigated. So we continue with our investigation. The reason that is significant is because about a year ago, the city of Sparks put in their ordinance, or their charter, in section three, the last item, that the city manager has to have an agreement with the judge before the municipal court can be investigated. So a reasonable person would conclude that manager Driscoll did not have an agreement with Judge McCarthy to be investigated. I now would like to address what Sparks is doing, the city of Sparks is doing regarding the Nevada Supreme Court decision in Sparks v. Sparks. The city of Sparks paid thousands of dollars to hire a law firm called Kemper-Kroll. Mayor Kroll of Carson City is one of the partners in the law firm. And Kemper-Kroll had an agenda and injected themselves into the Sparks v. Sparks case. And their attorney at the time, Jason Woodbury, stated in his documents to the Nevada Supreme Court that he wanted a Judge Art Ritchie, Thomas Arthur Ritchie Jr., to speak to the Nevada Supreme Court on behalf of the Municipal Court of Sparks. This is curious because Art Ritchie is a disqualified judge down in the Eighth Judicial District, which is Las Vegas, and he was disqualified six months prior to Jason Woodbury asking the Supreme Court to hear him. Now, disqualification of a judge is lethal to their career. Under NRS-1, a judge who is disqualified has been found biased and committing acts of improprieties. So why would Sparks pay tens of thousands of dollars to Kemper-Kroll and have Art Ritchie speak? Because Art Ritchie has an agenda. He, when he was the presiding judge in the Family Division in Clark County, he, the death rate of children due to child abuse escalated 200 percent. He then became the chief judge of the Eighth Judicial District, and he spoke before the Clark County Commissioners and couldn't get anything through. So he injected himself into the Sparks lawsuit, and he needed to be vetted. He's, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council. Moving on to approval of the agenda, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the activities that have been going on for the local emergency, I would like to add an emergency line item, agenda item, to your meeting today at the end of your regular business to discuss the declaration of local emergency and to give a situational update and the ability for the council to provide any direction to me as we continue to work under the declaration of emergency. So if we could add that to the end of your regular business, I would appreciate it.
Would that come under the Public Hearing Action Items?
It would actually be, we could do it after general business is done, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the agenda or any changes.
Move to approve.
Okay.
You want to go through the, sorry.
We've got it, that's right. Ms. Bybee?
I haven't been here in a while.
Move to approve the agenda as amended, adding item 9.2.
Okay, we have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, minutes, we don't have any. They're not done yet. Is that right, Teresa?
Correct.
Okay, number seven, announcements, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest. 7.1, presentation on Safe Embrace, and who's giving that? Come on down, sir.
Thank you.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for having me.
John?
Yes, sir.
Good to have you see.
Do you mind if I sit?
Can you, can you hear? If they can hear you.
If you prefer me to sit, I'll sit. My name is John Etchamendi. I'm the executive director of Safe Embrace. We're a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in Sparks. We're right around the corner. We provide services to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking here in Sparks. We, I'll tell you more about our services. Domestic violence is highlighted there because I think a lot of us these days are looking at all of the conversations around sex trafficking and sexual assault, but I wanted to point out that domestic violence in this state and in this community, we're national leaders. How many of you are aware that our local homeless shelter cannot keep up with the population of homeless folks? All of us, right? We've all seen the lines. Nevada leads the nation in homicide of women by an intimate partner there, and we have done for 18 years. Incidentally, Safe Embrace has been doing this work for 18 years in our community. As I sit here and speak to you today, I have 13 adults and just as many children waiting to come into a secure emergency shelter. Many of the victims that we serve each year are pimped out, prostituted, and that's how we get to sex trafficking, sexual assault. Last year, 51 percent of the adults in our care were sexually assaulted by their intimate partner. And in fact, the majority of cases of domestic violence and sexual assault, or the majority of cases of sexual assaults are folks that are raped, that are raped by people they know. Flip. So, you know, I won't burden you with all the definitions. Obviously, domestic violence isn't just physical violence. It's not just a black eye. We're talking about abuse, abusive relationships, right? I will point out that the service that Safe Embrace provides to the city of Sparks specifically is very unique and one that really complements the work that our law enforcement officers do in this realm. When you go out to a domestic dispute or disturbance, you can only make an arrest if there's a physical assault. Our service, we provide service to anyone in an abusive relationship. They don't have to charge or make a charge, press a charge against someone they're scared of. And so we fill the cracks in a way because even if someone is afraid to report, or if there isn't a reportable incident, something that can't be arrested, a perp can't be arrested, we can provide service. And the long-term kind of effect of domestic violence, I mean, take a look at this slide. All of the things that we do, we're working on all of this, the service that we provide, we're working with kids so that they don't pursue the generational cycles of violence. They don't become victims themselves or victimizers. We're working on repairing people after sometimes decades of emotional abuse and psychological and substance abuse issues that relate. The numbers are pretty staggering nationally, truly staggering nationally, as you can see. So in Nevada, this, let me go ahead and flip for the sake of time. Take a look at this. This is our national ranking in homicide of women. These, this is dead women. This is how we track domestic violence nationally. Nevada consistently leads the nation. Last year, a woman on our waitlist in Sparks was murdered. Between Safe Embrace and Committee to Aid Abused Women, the two domestic violence programs here locally, they're a total of 39 beds in our community for domestic violence victims. We have 15 of those 30 beds, 39 beds. We are trying to expand our shelter. I need your help. For comparison's sake, let's talk about Carson City. In Carson City, incidentally, they had a murder last year as well, leaving advocates to end domestic violence. A woman leaving her shelter was murdered. The city of Carson actually provides a building for advocates to use to house victims, and they actually have more beds in Carson City for domestic violence and sexual assault victims than all of Reno and Sparks. There are more beds in just South Lake Tahoe than there are in all of Reno and Sparks for domestic violence victims. There are more beds in Gardinerville for domestic violence victims, emergency shelter beds, than all of Reno and Sparks between the two agencies. In all of those communities, the city steps up and provides support for the local nonprofits responding to victims. We could, we could really use some help here. This, I fact-checked. It is true. It is shocking. Interesting, isn't it? So we have a 24-hour crisis hotline. We have an emergency shelter. I'll show you some photos really quickly. We do survivor support groups both public and in our shelter. We're working with kids on bullying issues. Obviously, the kids that come through our program, they've seen a lot of violence. They've seen a lot of abuse. They're 14 times more likely to become perpetrators or victims themselves. And so even if this issue doesn't impact you personally in your own life, chances are some kid that's bullying your kid in school, their backstory may have an incident of domestic violence in it. This is our shelter. It's not, this is local. This is right around the corner. Each year in this shelter, we're providing beds for 200 women and children, and it's a drop in the bucket. Safe Embrace is unique in our community for a number of reasons. We're the only dual-focus program, which makes us the only rape shelter in town, but we've consistently run our waiting list now for over two years. So if you're a rape victim and you're traumatized, and we go out to support you as you're getting your SART exam, your physical exam where they collect evidence, they're looking for semen, they're looking for skin cells under fingernails, that kind of thing, it's horribly invasive. Right now, we can't provide shelter because we're always full. So we put folks that are deeply traumatized in motels. We need more beds. We need more space. I have the staff. I mean, we're going out to motels. This morning, we went to four different motel rooms to visit people that came in this weekend. So I have the staff. I have the funding. It's secured. Four professionals. Safe Embrace is the only local program of the two doing sexual assault response work, as well as housing sex trafficking victims, as well as having a therapist on staff. These are our rooms. As you can see, it is a little bit different than what people think of when they think of a mass shelter. It's not the homeless shelter downtown, right? We're talking about people from all socioeconomic walks, and we're not talking about homeless. We're talking about victims. We're the only program in all of northern Nevada, one of only two in the states that accepts pets. We do that right here in Sparks. You should be proud. Your local shelter is one of only two in the entire state housing pets with their owners so they don't have to abandon with a violent partner, but some people, many people, choose not to even leave if they have to abandon an animal. We're one of only 3 percent of shelters nationally to offer this service. We do employment, we provide employment assistance. We do housing work. We put people in transitional housing where they get ongoing case management. We are trying to assist people as they recover and trying to do all that we can so that they don't enter another abusive relationship. Here's some numbers for you. We had 732 people seek shelter at Safe Embrace last year. Of those, only 143 we could actually take in because of our size. That's a whole lot of people turned away. I went to the Shelter From the Storm, the VOA's brunch this year. Three of the five case studies, three of the five testimonials for the mass shelter downtown on Record Street that they showed were domestic violence victims. Those domestic violence victims, those rape victims, they don't belong downtown at the mass shelter. I'm sorry. They belong in a respectful environment that's more like a home with case managers that are helping them directly, that are specific to the trauma, right, that they've undergone. 23 sex trafficking victims were housed right here in Sparks. Even more were turned away. What you can do, I hope that you've learned a little bit about your local shelter. I hope that you'll become a fan of ours. I hope that you will invite us out. We're right around the corner. We'll always give you a tour. Anytime you drop by, we're right by the marina. But more than that, what I'd really like from my ask, my big ask, is if you all ever have an opportunity to provide a building like the one that advocates to end domestic violence get in Carson City, they're on a $1 a year lease kind of thing. I have the staff. What I don't have is the physical space. I've got, I raised, last year alone, I raised $200,000 for a new building on our property so we can extend it. The contractors, the local contractors that we're talking about or talking with are saying that it's going to cost 500 grand to expand our shelter, so I got a lot more work to do. But I tell you what, if I had a building, I could take that 200,000, roll it into doing renovations and upgrades to a building. We could have this done this year. If the building is a public building, great. That means that the police, when they have a domestic, they can say, do you, you know, you're not going to press charges. Do you want to go somewhere safe? Then we don't have to put folks, victims, in motels around town. They could drive up, drop someone off. We could have a security guard at the front, and they'd have a safe, respectful place to go. So if this is possible, I'd like you to just consider it. I don't know what else to say. We need beds. We need beds fast. The community's growing rapidly. These are the designs for the building that we're working on, but unless we can raise some money, a lot more money, a lot more quickly, we're going to continue to turn away. The majority of people that call for help, a crisis hotline. That's it. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
John, thanks for that report. I'll ask the council, Charlene, Ms. Bybee, if you have a question or a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did not realize, and we're sitting right here in Sparks, I know of Safe Embrace, but providing us with more details about what you do and what your need is. I'm familiar with the domestic violence issue. I've worked, you know, through the years with United Way on a funding panel with Silent Witness years ago, so, you know, aware of just what a critical problem it is. My question is, how do you coordinate or work with Committee to Aid Abused Women? Because I know with United Way, they were funding for some shelters there.
Sure.
Do you have the same clients, or are you, the sex trafficking issues in addition to domestic violence? How's your coordination with CAW?
So we coordinate heavily with CAW, with WACAN, with the VOA, with HOPE. You know, you can't be in this industry, industry. You can't be working on these social issues without coordinating resources, and we do. In a lot of ways, we're very similar to CAW, although, like I pointed out, we're also very unique, and because there's two, we've pushed them, they've pushed us to change and adapt and move forward. We both have waiting lists. I mean, the problem, the problem here is there are simply not enough beds for the survivors, places to go, and so we're on the phone with them on a daily basis. Our program differs. Like I said, we're a therapeutic-based program, so we have a therapist on staff working on the psychological state, the trauma. We also, pet-friendly, small difference, but it's important for folks with pets who don't want to abandon them. We are also the only rape shelter in town, and as far as sex trafficking, CAW will try to squeeze them in when they can, and certainly we will too. WACAN doesn't have a shelter currently, so they're using ours. We're all doing our best to keep up with the growth in the community. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. It's critically important. Obviously, the need, you know, the demand for the services sadly exceeds what you have and what the community has right now, and I think that's something we need to look at, and I'm very interested in looking to see what we possibly, you know, whether it's the city or working with other, you know, connections that we have in the community, be very interested in seeing what we could do to work with you.
We've been talking with city officials, SPD, and I think there is a need for a Victims of Crime Drop-In Shelter. In the middle of the night, they've got a victim or the hospital has a victim, where do they go? And right now, those victims are going to motels all across Reno and Sparks. I think Sparks is in a real unique position to add to the continuum of care in our community with a secure drop-in shelter, and I would love to talk to you all more about that, creating a place where you can be dropped off.
Okay, any other questions or comments for John? John, I have a couple of questions. Yes, sir. You just have the one shelter.
We have one safe house. We own it. 15 beds.
And you're just in Washoe County. You're not throughout the state. You're just in Washoe County?
Just here. Just here in Sparks.
And all of your funding is done by donations, local donations, or?
No, that is not true.
Oh, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir. No, 85 percent of our funding is coming from the federal government Office of Violence Against Women.
Okay.
The rest of those funds are being raised locally.
Okay, so 85 percent of them is done by the feds?
Yes, sir.
How long can a woman stay in your home?
In our, in our safe house, 90 days, which makes us a longer stay shelter.
Okay.
The majority of the folks, the residents that come in, our average stay right now is 32 days. Our case managers are working to identify needs with the clients and then push them towards achieving their own specific goals. So for instance, if you're a victim, your goal may be to complete your divorce and child custody case so that you can leave the state. You can't leave the state with children if they're being, if there's a dispute between the husband and the wife. So, you know, that may be a shorter stay. If someone is injured, seriously injured, we have a lot of choking victims, and so, you know, if you're working on, you know, a physical trauma as well as the emotional trauma, it could be a while. You might stay the 90 days and then access our, we have a one-year transitional housing program where we have rental voucher assistance. So we'll pay a portion of your rent. It tapers down. It starts at 100 percent by the end of the year. It's none. We help people basically get their lives back together after severe emotional and financial abuse.
Okay, John. Mr. Dare.
I just thank you as well, and it's awesome to be out there helping our community. I wanted to make sure that you give the number. We have a lot of people who do watch this, and if someone needed to have that number, crisis hotline, can you make sure you speak that real clear, just so our constituents in the city know what that is?
Absolutely. So the 24-hour hotline has been in continuous operation for 18 years. It's 775-322-3466.
Well, John, your passion is evident, and obviously you have a passion for what you're doing. So thanks, thanks for the report. Thanks for the report, and we appreciate it, and we'll see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, 7.2, Presentation of Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency Regarding the Truckee Meadows Housing Study. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today. As most of you know, I'm Kim Robinson. I'm the executive director with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and this...
I'm Jeremy Smith, the GIS coordinator at TMRPA.
So, thank you very much for your time. As we've mentioned, or as was mentioned in the beginning here, Truckee Meadows Housing Study, TMRPA has just completed this housing study. And we talked about quite a few subject matters in this, including our current supply of housing and residential land in our community. We took a look at homes that have been approved that have not currently been built yet. We've taken a look at some of the housing needs that we predict we will have in the future based on some changing demographics and some projections. And then we also went ahead and did some future housing scenarios around how we could build housing in our community and what some implications for public policy may be around that. We want to stress that this was definitely a group effort. This is a project that we worked on with a lot of folks. There were quite a few folks from Sparks that helped us out a lot on this, so thank you very much, everybody, for their time. This is something that was funded primarily by the Washoe County School District. Over 93 percent of the funding actually came from outside of the agency for this particular study. All right, so let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, well, we started by trying to understand what the housing stock in the region is today. There's roughly 175,000 housing units within the Truckee Meadows, our Truckee Meadows Services area, and we broke those down by five density classes, and what that really means is how many dwelling units there are per acre. We start at the top there with the lowest density category, which is very large lots. Half acres are larger. It's about 9 percent of the total housing stock. Then the 45 percent of our housing stock is in that light blue category, the moderate density, single-family. This is kind of a traditional suburban home. And then we go on down through the rest. There's a middle category, which includes some single-family, detached products, attached products, duplexes, this kind of middle category. Then we get a true multifamily where we have a moderate density. This is a typical kind of a garden apartment, all the way down to like a high-rise apartment. So that's how it breaks down. The vast majority, almost two-thirds of the housing, really is in the single-family detached product. That's really not surprising, given that nationally, most housing really is in that kind of traditional suburban product, and only really about 10 percent of the housing units nationally are in what you might consider walkable, amenity-based areas. So how we kind of got to that understanding and how we went into the future is we used the Washoe County Assessor Parcels. We augmented that with information we've collected over the years, looking at planned unit developments, tentative maps, this sort of thing. We're able to identify which lands are residential, which lands are vacant and zoned for residential. We remove any constraints that exist so that we can estimate the capacity of that land based on the approved dwellings per acre, and that's how we get to an understanding of how many units that the region can support right now. And this is a map of that, about 42,000 acres of suitable land that we used in our study. You can see the colors relate to the housing types I mentioned before. Basically, 95 percent of this is vacant land. We did also direct some of our, some emphasis within mostly the McCarran Ring to infill products and redevelopment potential. So on the vacant land, about 83,000 new houses could be built today, given the existing zoning. Almost, or over two-thirds of those would be in Almost, or over two-thirds of those would be in those two low-density categories, the moderate-density single-family being the most, the light blue. And what we'll show later in the presentation, access to infrastructure is a bit of a concern. I think this is the last slide here. This is just how it breaks down into 83,000 units. You can see that that big bar of light blue is the single-family micro deandria type product.
Okay, let's move on and talk a little bit about future housing needs. So, part of what we are struggling with now is the housing affordability issue, and I know this is something that has, is in discussion right now, it's certainly been in the paper. Approximately one-third of the households in our region are cost burden, and fully half of percent, or I'm sorry, half of our renters, or 49% of our renters are cost burden. When we took a look at some of the numbers here, we realized that one-third of the households have income below $35,000. I think what I want to say is actually on the next slide, that's why I paused there, sorry. Okay, that's okay. So, when we take a look at this table here, those top three lines, everything from $60,000 down to less than $20,000, what we found is that individuals in those income categories are effectively blocked from being able to own a home, and that is based on our calculations around the $275,000 median home price. We know it's actually risen since that point in time. That includes a 20% down payment and good credit. Of course, as the median house price increases, the annual income necessary to that also increases. You can also take a look on the table, and it shows the percentage of existing households that have that particular type of income, so it's approximately 55% of our households have, make $60,000 or less in our community. Okay, so, we wanted to introduce the idea today of something called missing-middle housing. This is a type of housing, it can range anywhere from a duplex, you know, up through bungalow courts, townhomes, which is what I live in, some live-work spaces, this kind of housing that exists between detached, single-family homes and mid-rises. This is something that was very popular earlier last century, and was kind of slowly lost interest, or slowly lost kind of prominence in terms of the housing market, but we think there's a real possibility here, because these additional type of housing products could provide some affordable workforce housing. Okay? And the example above, the diagram above, really kind of speaks to a rough approximation of what a housing cycle might be. What we're really saying here is that different times in your life, folks want different housing types, right? They want different housing types, and they can afford different housing types. Those needs change over time, so. We are also seeing an increase in kind of preferences, and preferences around being able to walk to, either being able to shop, or restaurants, being able to work. This is from 2013, and this really shows the first time that there's a preference towards being able to walk towards things, rather than having to drive to some of those, whether it's kind of work or entertainment. Okay? Let's talk a little bit about demographics in our region, and some of the likely trends. So, one of our large demographic groups is the baby boomer households. We anticipate seeing more one-person households, we anticipate seeing homeowner rates to decrease, especially after 75 years old, and we also expect income to decrease in terms of millennials, which is actually a larger generation than baby boomers. Household sizes will increase as they continue to form families, and we anticipate that homeownership rates will increase with income, but they are currently behind in that kind of realm, in terms of being able to have the income to be able to afford homes. Okay, let's move on to future housing scenarios.
Okay, so, I kind of laid out the supply and what our housing stock was like, and what we maybe can accommodate in the future for existing zoning, and Kim did a great job of laying out how housing needs and demographics are switching. And so, what we wanted to do then was take those two things and simulate the future. Now, the two scenarios that I'm going to show you are just possible futures, and of course, we don't know, but one's based on status quo, and one is kind of a more compact scenario. But before we get there, we have to have a target of how far into the future we're going to look, and how many people we can expect, and how many units we're going to need. We used our 2014 consensus forecast, which at the time was around 128,000 new people over the 20 years out to 2035. So, that's what we were shooting for as far as a population. If you break that down by a person-per-household multiplier, from the census, you kind of divide it, then you get to about 50,600 units. So, that was the target number of units that we were trying to achieve over the 20-year period. And like I said, we did two scenarios. The classic scenario, based on the pattern of development of residential since 2000. So, we captured the boom and the bust really there. We noticed there's more development towards the edge of the community, very limited redevelopment was allowed on that one, and the housing type mix, so the proportion of those five categories I shared with you matched just about exactly what we saw over the last 15 years in that scenario. Then, we tried a different, a second scenario, something that's more compact. We had more development of residential within the McCarran Ring, in fact, 25% of those 50,600 units we put inside the ring. We increased redevelopment potential and infill, and we also changed the housing mix slightly, so that we included a few, or higher percentage of denser products, and that's what these two histograms we'll show you. On the left, we have the classic scenario, and it sort of matches the graph I showed you previously, where you have a predominance of the single-family product. Over in the McCarran scenario, the dark blue, the orange, and even the dark red, there's more of that and less of the blue and gray, the light blue. It's a difference of about 200 units moving out of a single-family into more mixed, or multifamily products per year, so about 200 units per year. So, here are the maps. These are 40-acre hexagon bins, we basically encapsulated all the units we predicted out of 2035 into these bins, and if you see a dark blue, that means there's very few new units, and all the way to the red, where there's over 100 new units. This is the status quo, or classic scenario, and you can see that there's quite a bit of red up to the northwest, in the North Valleys area, looking even out towards Verdi, and the southeast as well. And contrast that with the McCarran scenario, tough to see, and I'm going to do a little animation in a second here, but more red focused inside the McCarran Ring, there's still things happening on the edge, but it's not realizing quite as much, so here's the difference. You see the classic, and sort of see it densifying. So, those are the two scenarios that we looked at, but again, these are just possible futures, and we have the capacity built in now that we can evaluate different futures, as we continue to monitor trends and see where things are going. We wanted to then evaluate the differences that would be realized from these two scenarios, and the first thing we looked at was, this is really neat and a new thing for us, that our consultant helped us to achieve, it's sort of a financial feasibility model, a market-based model, where we looked at several pro formas for different housing types on each vacant parcel, to find out which housing type would be the most profitable for the zoning. And in some cases, there was no profitability, so about 22,000 units made money, and this is the housing types as it broke down, so there are definitely a predominance currently in that single-family product as far as financial feasibility. So, that was really a neat step, and we're looking to work with developers and try and hone that model to get a better understanding of how they deal with the profitability of development.
So, the modern, or the moderate-density, single-family, those are just bigger lots?
Those are like third-acre lots, quarter-acre lots, the classic kind of suburban home.
And then, the low-density is just smaller lots?
Low-density is very large lots, like acre lots, or half-acre lots.
Oh, yeah, okay, just the opposite. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
And just really quickly, if I may, we did actually work with approximately five developers to help us come up with the numbers, to take a look at this market-based development analysis, but as Jeremy said, we'd like to work with them a little bit more to understand this better.
We also evaluated access to infrastructure. The first pass was sort of just looking at a very rough estimate of where we have major water pipes, major sewer pipes, and major roads. And so, that's what you can see here in that kind of gray cloud, within the black boundary of the Truckee Meadows Services area. Any of the blue shapes are vacant residential parcels that are within the scope of where those infrastructure pieces already exist, and any of the orange ones are outside that, so infrastructure would need to be extended. About 52,652 of the 83,000 potential units are within that sort of adequately served area. But this is where we really did quite a bit of work with our partners, they helped us out tremendously. We got in with the Regional Transportation Commission, the Washoe County School District, Tom, what Truckee Meadows authority, and then the Public Works Departments of the three jurisdictions, to understand what would be the differences to capital infrastructure expenditures, given these two scenarios. And what you can find, if we just go through the graph, the right, pretty quickly, the biggest savings, well, there's a savings with the compact scenario, is what we found, number one. And if you break it down by infrastructure provider, the biggest savings came with the RTC, with about $560 million. If we're a little more compact, and folks drive less, and hopefully, we need to build less roads. With regard to schools, we know we're facing overcrowding issues in the schools, given that our two patterns weren't dramatically different enough, they didn't really affect the schools that need to be built, so there's still going to need to be building schools with that amount of growth, and the pattern wasn't as important in that case. However, we have been talking about going further with the schools, looking at transportation costs, land prices, trying to get a more nuanced view of those two patterns, or different patterns. Also, we saw savings in the compact scenario similarly, because you don't have to extend pipes as far, given a more compact development pattern for both water and wastewater. And so, in the end, it was roughly a 10% reduction in capital costs for the McCarran scenario, about $780 million.
Okay, so, in terms of all the information that we've shared with you today, we should talk a little bit about what some choices might be for public policy, if some wants to be made, so let's go ahead and move forward. Quickly, on the conclusions, we hope we've identified that we need a wider variety of housing types. A statistic that really stuck out to us was this one, this homeownership costs have increased by 60% over the past 15 years, but income has only increased by 17%. And if those type of trends continue, the folks who live here are going to have an even more difficult time being able to purchase homes. And that missing-middle housing that we talked about can definitely provide different types of housing for affordable workforce housing. Okay? We also know that, you know, local government service providers, everyone is facing some fiscal pressures around providing services and infrastructure, and that one way to help deal with that location of housing is very important, because servicing land in a more compact scenario is definitely less expensive. When we looked at that total, it comes out to about $15,415 less per house, and those costs are split across both the development community and the public sector, but that is a savings across each home that is built, if we build just a little bit more compactly in that particular scenario. Okay? This really quickly runs over kind of the dynamics of the housing market. I suspect that most of you already know this, public sector, I'm sorry, the private sector builds almost all of the housing units, and it's really the current housing market conditions that kind of identify that, but the public sector is a partner in the provision of housing, and has some obligations around health, safety, and welfare to the community. All right, so we have a variety of opportunities, and in the interest of time, I will be very brief around these particular pieces. One of the biggest items we'd like to discuss is adding scenario planning tools to the regional plan during the 2017 update. So, the two scenarios that we developed in this particular housing study are just the beginning. We could develop a variety of scenarios that allow us to evaluate various types of services, and we think that that's a good tool for the future. One other piece that we are interested in exploring, this is a copy of a return on investment slide from a particular firm called, I believe, Urban Three, and what this is is a return on investment on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We'd like to explore this a bit for our region. Really, the conversation is about balance. It's not so much that every parcel needs to have a positive outcome, but we need to have balance around those kind of incomes and also service costs, and we think that could be very useful. Certainly, we'd like to continue to partner with the jurisdictions, the affected entities around capital improvement plans, and we believe it's important to capitalize on those public resource investments that have already been made by supporting development in those areas. Okay, as I mentioned, as we mentioned, we'd like to talk a little bit more about bringing in the modeling around future feasibility, financial feasibility, and the idea of developing a small competitive grant fund to help reduce risk in the private market, so that potentially developers would be willing to try some new products, and we can take on some of the burden of that risk for them. Okay, there's still more, but trust me when I say, there's a lot of opportunities, and I think that that's really fantastic. This idea that I think we're really promoting is, we've taken a look at capital costs around supporting development patterns, but we also would like to take a look at operations and maintenance, because the numbers that we have so far are for capital costs, and we think operations and maintenance would be really important. Okay? Thanks. I want to say thank you to all of our partners, they're listed up above. We are certainly available for any questions that you may have, we've provided you with an infographic. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Dare.
Thank you so much, I enjoyed it even the second time, very good, very good. The Rotary Meeting as well. But, one of the questions I do have, and I just, how is this working? If you do push things into the McCarran area, obviously, your schools do change, because you actually now are overcrowding more the McCarran section, or you're busing students out. Have you guys put that into the scenario of how that works? I mean, if you're talking policy, how does that end up looking at when we're already dealing with overcrowding, and we're pushing them into there? Is that going into some of the conversations on what they'll build inside of there? Is that...
Sure, and we're actually, this study is the result of our first shared work program with the school district. A lot of the overcrowded schools are actually more, are out a little bit more, not necessarily kind of in the center, or in this McCarran Ring as we're talking about. What we talked about with the school district is, following on this particular study, we get into a second shared work program with them, so that we can really start to identify kind of the locational differences of building in terms of schools, in terms of costs and things like that. They're very interested in pursuing that with us, and we'll be presenting to them next month, and having that conversation with their board.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? You know, in the beginning, go ahead and describe.
Kim, Jeremy, thank you so much. This is just such valuable information. I mean, it really, and sitting on the regional governing board, you know, we're working with you as regional, you know, partners with Washoe County, and with the city of Reno, and as we look at planning issues that come to the regional governing board and to our various planning agencies, this is like incredibly helpful information as we make decisions, along with the private sector, of what they build, but for us, for infrastructure costs, for affordable housing, for schools, for infrastructure needs that we have that are our responsibility, gives us such a dynamic wealth of information that falls right in with, say, our sewer study that we just got. So, really being, it's exciting to me that we're able to, the technology has provided us the ability to really, to gather more information to make better decisions. So, I appreciate this information, look forward to how we work together, and what this looks like, because I think it's kind of just the beginning of some incredible work that I look forward to. City Sparks working with you and with our partners, to see how we craft the future with our growth. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? In the beginning of your presentation, you said something about access to infrastructure.
Yes.
What did you, what was that comment?
Well...
That they didn't have access. Is that what I...
Exactly. This map was sort of illustrating that, in the sense that those orange parcels currently do not have, infrastructure would need to be extended in some way, either a water pipe or a sewer interceptor, or...
Well, that's almost true with every, every new development, to give the infrastructure to them. I was just wondering what the comment meant, I wasn't sure when he said they didn't have access to it. What you're saying is it wasn't, it's not there now.
It's not there yet, but there are these blue areas where it is.
Okay, thank you. Good report. Anybody else got any comments, or?
I have a question.
Check.
What is it that your recommendations, what is it that the city of Sparks is not doing vis-à-vis your potential steps or recommendations?
I would say that the city of Sparks has actually been an excellent partner on this particular conversation with us, so I wouldn't necessarily describe it as what city of Sparks is not doing. Again, this is a regional report, so these potential steps are for the entire region. We are working with your staff around some of these particular pieces, including this discussion on existing and future capital improvement plans, and maximizing existing public resources.
As I'm aware, we always consider that anyway, with any new development. The thing that bothers me, though, is that our philosophy has always been to allow development to pay for itself, but you've got to create a small competitive grant fund to assist in developing denser housing products. It sounds like you're asking government now to start subsidizing development.
The small grant fund was not something that would be identified from government funds, that was not particularly the conversation. It would be modeled off a program that we actually experienced outside of this region, that would, again, allow for the fund to be able to take on some of the risk. One of the things that we learned is that when a developer is interested in developing a new type of product that they haven't done before, so they don't necessarily have a track record for it, it's harder to get financing for it. So, one of the pieces that we may be able to offer is providing a little bit of that kind of seed money, or that income around that.
But you're not suggesting it's a governmental function to do this?
No.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Kim and Jeremy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 7.3 is the Presentation of Hometown Christmas Parade Winners. Francine, come on down. Why do I think I know who's going to win some of this stuff here?
I know, I think they're sitting right behind me.
I think they are.
If anybody asks here for a door, Jeremy, if you want to come get in the first couple of your...
How many entries do we have this year?
We had 85.
85?
In the past, we've had over 100, and we pared it down to 75, but... And we pared it down to 75, but...
Things happen.
Things happen. You can't really turn people away when they really want to be in a parade.
Good deal.
So. Francine Bird, Special Event Supervisor, for the record. I'm here to present the awards for the Hometown Christmas Parade. And normally, we do this with Gino, but as I was looking back there about how we could do a little photo walk with everyone, since we don't have Gino here today, we could just do a group with all of the city council members if you all are okay with that.
We could do that, and Gino's not here today because he's recovering from knee replacement surgery.
No.
And today's his birthday, so if everybody wants to say happy birthday, let's do it. One, two, three.
Happy Birthday, Gino!
See, we covered him. I'm sure he's watching.
Okay. We will start with the Kiwanis Club. Actually, no, it's happy in any order. All right. Let's just start with the Carson Middle School Band. Do you want to please? I love that. You guys want to like just push your...
Yeah, bring them up here.
Oh, you want to bring them up there?
Yeah, bring them up here. We'll see.
There you go.
What's this award?
This is Best Marching Band.
All right. I know. We've been on the flood deal all weekend, so we're... Dawn looks great. Shirley looks great. One of your little...
In the middle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for coming to the parade.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Super.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. See you next year.
Yep.
Okay. We'll just stay tuned.
For Best Float, we have Sparks Heritage Museum.
Oh, very good.
Was there a special...
There's, yeah. Good for you.
All right.
You get it?
Yeah, got it.
Is there anybody here from Granite Construction Company? Because Granite is the people who built the Sparks Museum float, and we want to thank Cory, who designed it, and all the other wonderful people with Granite who are doing this for us. Thanks.
Do they build it every year?
Yes, they do.
All right. We have Best Community Entry, which is the Kiwanis Club of downtown Park.
Hey!
You're not going to come? Come. Come on. We know who does all the work.
Oh, we've been doing it since forever.
He drove.
He drove.
Come on.
Come on. Congratulations.
They work hard.
They're not camera shy or anything.
Yeah, what if they're upset? Perfect.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Best Business Entry, which is Chase International.
Hey! Business?
Business entry.
Congratulations. Is this any different, is it from the one from Sparks or which one's...
We're from Sparks.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's good work.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for being on our parade.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. You can sit down if you want, Grace.
The Best Vehicle, which is the vehicle.
Is this one for... What's this one for?
The best vehicle.
Okay, that's right. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll stand in front of you.
Come on.
I think they'll still be able to see me.
Oh, yeah.
What was the best vehicle?
It was a...
It was huge.
Artillery trailer vehicle by...
Oh, yeah. We need that.
Actually, we saw that one.
Yeah, a five-ton truck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for being on our parade.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. All right, and I don't think we have any entries or anybody here from the Girl Scouts or... The best animals was Perez Dancing Horses. They're our favorite every year. The best costume group was Jenny's School of Dance. And then the best overall was the Girl Scouts. You can't beat your number girls.
Yeah, she quit them.
She did quit them.
And lastly, the only thing I just wanted to just end on is I just want to give special thanks to the city staff that helped put on the parade. It's a huge event. It's one of the last remaining events that we produce. And city staff, particularly Public Works and the Police Department, do a lot of work to make sure that it happens and it's safe.
You know, one of my favorite events, Francine, and to see, we have thousands of people there. It's a get-together for families and it's, it's great. And the tree lighting Friday night before. And then we got competition with the Nugget with their huge tree, so everything was just wonderful this year. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the work.
Can you say that again? The Police Department was awesome?
He's riding a big wave today. He's been getting that all day today, and I don't know why. Yeah, you'll take it. And Francine, thank you for your efforts, and we know how hard that is. And all the special events, we've got new ones coming this year too, so that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's going to be a great time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Okay, now we have to do some work here, so this is tough. But number eight is consent items. Anybody wishing to pull a consent item? Not seeing anything like that at all? How about a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I make a motion to approve 8.1 through 8.4.
We have a motion, and Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass this unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to general business. Number nine, consideration of possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of $327,049 for Sparks' share of a construction bid award to Savage &amp; Son.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the council. For the record, Neil Crutts, Assistant City Manager here, pinch hitting today for Community Services Director Martini, who is hopefully home, still asleep after manning and directing the EOC overnight, and Treatment Plant Manager Michael Drinkwater, who I believe is still stuck, so to speak, at Tom Wharf because we've still got water over Clean Water Way.
Yeah.
Yes, but as I recall, they had a really good meal out there last night, so it was a little bit like camping. But that said, you know, we invest millions of dollars a year at Tom Wharf to keep the facility operating, and this is another project from our capital improvement plan out there. You may recall that we have a total of three water systems out there. The first one is potable because we do actually use a fair amount of potable water out there in the process, and the other two are reclaimed water systems. We're running different pressures for allowing us to do various maintenance and cleaning activities at Tom Wharf. Going back a few years, the staff put together kind of a risk ranking of the water system facility, looking at critical components that needed to be replaced, kind of secondary, and then the things we will get to latest. This is the second phase of that effort, so we've already cleared out the critical ones. This is a little bit more than a million dollars' worth of work, our second phase in those three systems. The actual total award is $1,042,525. There were two bidders on the project, and Savage &amp; Son came out with a low bid. Inasmuch as this is an investment in the plant facility itself, we share costs with Reno on an ownership basis, so we're on the hook for 31.37% of that million and change, which boils down to the number that Mayor Protem Smith read to you, the $327,047. $327,047.9. I took them three times.
It was tough for me, too.
It's been a long few days.
Don't you forget the nine cents.
And nine cents. Thank you very much. And with that, the Reno City Council did take action on this item at their meeting on December 14th and did approve it, and we are asking you to approve the reimbursement to them for that expenditure. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you've got.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Bybee?
No comments. I'm ready for a motion.
Go ahead.
Unless, did you... Okay. I'd like to move to approve the reimbursements to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of the water piping replacement project Phase Two at Truckee Meadow West, Tom Wharf, excuse me, I'm stumbling, in an amount not to exceed $327,049.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass this unanimously. Thank you, Neil.
Yeah.
Now we'll go to the emergency line item. Where'd he go? There he is. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record. This is a very unusual agenda item, fortunately, for the city of Sparks in that we don't have emergencies very often and we're normally able to have a lot of information out, both to you as the members and the public. Unfortunately, this is one of those situations that's not. During last week, the weather modeling kind of changed for our region and showed an atmospheric river, which is basically warm water coming in from Hawaii into the west coast, creating a lot of rain. And that rain, when it's put on top of large amounts of snow, which we had, turns into flooding conditions. Typically, we see a 100-year style event that we, you know, we hear about every 10 years. It's been a lot more than 10 years, and so apparently we were due. So we did have, we had all of the right components for a flooding situation, which we did in fact experience yesterday and are still experiencing today. So really, what I have in front of you, I have an obligation as your city manager under your emergency management ordinances to, number one, take control of the situation because it's highly operational, and then to provide information to the council and seek their assistance as needed for policy. One of the acts that you charge me with is to determine if there is actual danger or imminent danger to the citizens and the infrastructure and the facilities of the city. And if I determine through consultation with my staff or with others that there is in fact danger has already occurred or there's imminent danger that needs to have some operational change or efficiencies applied to it, it's my obligation to act. When I choose to do that upon all the review of the facts, it does require that I brief the mayor at the time to make sure that he agrees with my assessment. And to the best of my ability, if I can get to a council in a legal and lawful manner, do that. In this case, obviously, with three to four days of planning time with imminent danger, a lawful meeting with this body to talk about something like a declaration, it's not possible. So I did, in fact, last week, I did in fact draft up a declaration of a local emergency. I briefed it both with Mayor Martini and then in detail with Mayor Protem Smith, and he agreed with my actions, and we did declare an emergency. With that, we were already in a lot of detail, in a lot of operational mode, had our emergency operations center was activated. We were working in concert with other local governments and agencies within the valley. We were going through our incident action plan and actually creating a very defensible ability to mitigate and do all of the pre-planning activities we could do, doing the staging and preparing facilities, both our private and public facilities, and going forward. So you saw a lot of, a lot of action in the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday timeframes where we had up to seven sandbag stations with sand and sandbags provided by the city at our expense. We helped and assisted anyone who needed those facilities to protect their personal or private property. We had well over 175,000 sandbags went out in a two-and-a-half-day timeframe from our sites. We also saw using our staff and going to long shifts, extended hours, specialty work and things like that. I have been keeping you abreast pretty much since Thursday with a minimum of a daily update, recapping what your staff has done on behalf of the citizens in your name, if you will. Also, you've received several briefs that the city has provided, communications, press releases, Twitter's, Facebook updates, live camera shots from drones, every asset that we can think of. And we've supplied that information to keep you in the loop as to what we're doing operationally to meet the obligations of emergency management as you designate to us through your ordinance. And so one of the things that you'll see now is that with floods, you get a couple of days, hopefully, to prepare vet floods, and then when the floodwaters go down, the way you manage a flood is you find out what's broken and needs repair, and you start repairing what's broken. That's where we are today. We have, for all intents and purposes, we've seen the peak. It's not quite over. The river is still at its apex, if you will, and we're hoping by dark today that we will be on a steep downhill projected flow that the Weather Service has been spot-on so far for the last four days on what was going to go up and when. We're hoping that their projections of going down will be as precise as their previous projections. We currently have about 12 buildings in the East Gregg, Demming, and the Cluckey Lane area that there's too much water for our assessment teams to get in to determine what, if anything, needs to be done to have those buildings be safe for the businesses to return. We were very fortunate, even though there was a lot of water on the ground, it appears that the mitigation work that your team has done over the last 20 years, and specifically over the last 15, worked. And so some of the bathtubbing effect that we saw in '83, '86, '97, and 2005 did not happen in the same manner that they happened before for the most part. And so you can be very proud of your team and the engineers and the public, the public works functions that have put those into place, and the relationship with our contractors that helped us do the big job. One of the things that you will see in the future, because we will see it again, Phase Three of the North Truckee Drain, which you've authorized and have funded, we can actually see evidence of the engineering that we've done for that project. We'll drop water levels down in the areas that still need to come down, and you'll see even better escaping of the type of flood that we saw today. Fortunately, and this sounds unusual, but fortunately, we had not started on that project that has already been bid. If we had dug a big hole in the ground in front of what's already been done and had those big conduits open, and all that water would have come in from the river, we would have created a large mess. So thank goodness that that wasn't there. So once again, Sparks, a little planned luck, if you will. So what we will be working on in the next couple of days, we will be getting, trying to get away from 24-hour shifts, which is what we're in the middle of today. We know working on water is very dangerous at night and at dark, so we typically try not to do that work. We've done what we had to do up to this point. And so when this meeting is concluded, your emergency management team will sit down and take a hard look at downsizing the amount of effort after hours or extended shifts that our folks are going to need to do for the next several weeks to do the repair function and recovery that we will have. If our assessment's holding true, we're going to be doing a lot of cleanup of debris in streets. We're not going to be having a lot of our businesses have to do too much cleanup of their own businesses in order to get back underway. So we're hoping that that assessment will hold true because that will be different than our previous event. amount of effort after hours or extended shifts that our folks are going to need to do for the next several weeks to do the repair function and recovery that we will have. If our assessment's holding true, we're going to be doing a lot of cleanup of debris in streets. We're not going to be having a lot of our businesses have to do too much cleanup of their own businesses in order to get back underway. So we're hoping that that assessment will hold true, because that will be different than our previous events from that standpoint. We are accumulating costs that we're incurring. We've spent a lot of money at this point under current contracts that were already approved for doing different services to the city. That means we'll spend it a little faster now, we'll probably have to do some funding adjustments later on, but the cash and the authority to spend that cash was already in place, and that is due to good planning by your staff, both from the public work side, the engineering side, in addition to the preparation that your public safety folks do, both in police and fire, and their ability to ramp up the additional horsepower that they need and to have the equipment in place to do the things that we need to, water rescues and other things like that. And so if the event turns into one to where the federal government gets involved with proper declarations, we are in a position, and we're gathering the costs that can be reimbursed. There is a lot of costs that we just absorb ourselves as part of the way emergency management's set up from the, the local, both ourselves, the county, the state, and up to the fence. So your team is doing the best job they can to identify and capture everything that's potentially reimbursable. We've done everything we can to be reasonable with our efforts for the things that are not, but at the same point in time, your staff has been kept safe. We've been very, very fortunate at this point. We've had no injuries that I'm aware of, and if we've had any, they've been minor at that point, and we've had no loss of life that we're aware of with our public because of their. Your public has done a good job of listening to you and to your staff. It wasn't too long ago that, you know, it was like crying, you know, it was assumed you were just crying wolf because we never flooded. We've had enough flooding, unfortunately, that when we show what the Weather Service says, and we start doing our planning, and we explain and reach out to the business community or to the private community, and we ask them to participate in protecting themselves, they do it. We get the occasional, what are you doing, but at the end of the day, with what happened on the river, the river, and what you're going to see in the news tonight from the daylight filming, and if you go to the city's website and you look at the drone photography that was done by Mr. Abbott and his associate, you'll be absolutely amazed at what's happened and how lucky we are that we were able to mitigate as much as we did. So with that, I'm not really looking for any direction today unless you have something specific that you want me to do, and it's there, and I know that this is one of the more uncomfortable times for the, for the council, because we spend most of our time asking for your counsel and for you to provide us with some direction. This is one of the few times that we do what we're best at, keep you involved, and then a lot of times, we understand and we apologize that you feel a little helpless for what's there, but at the end of the day, it's been a pretty good partnership, and we're hoping that three weeks from now, we'll all be able to look back at it and believe that we did the best thing possible as a team. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, Ms. Bybee?
Steve, thank you for the update. Do you have any projected, I mean, timeline that we think on opening the roads back into the industrial complex, and some of those businesses? I know Kleppi Lane, obviously, is going to be probably slower to get up than some of the others that didn't have damage, but for the public access into from Sparks and McCarran and Vista?
They have access to every place in the industrial area except where there is standing water. So the end of Greg and Demming, Kleppi, and a few of the side streets in between there still have impassable water, and with the exception of those that's there, there's about twelve businesses that we haven't been able to get into, and neither have the owners. We allowed owners, if they could prove that they were owners, to at their own risk and peril, go in in the safest routes possible, and so we really don't have any on the outside. So I would say at this point, based on where we were around lunchtime, we're probably somewhere ninety to ninety-five percent accessible at this point, and it's been that way since lunchtime.
Thank you, and I would, I would like to just give a shout out to everyone. So impressed with the staff that worked long hours, that did such an incredible job from public safety to public works to everyone who's been working on this and just can't say thank you enough to the job that we did here in the City of Sparks, along with our regional partners of Washoe County and Reno, working together to do everything we could, and I think that we did, and I think, and glad to see it did not, you know, the planning and preparation had paid off. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
I'd ask Mr. Driscoll if he was asking the City Council to ratify his declaration of emergency and thereby give you the authority to declare the emergency over at your discretion down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. At this point, the actual declaration has been approved through ordinance by the Mayor Protem. There will be some next steps. I will return to you when the event is either finished or in hand. There will be, I will be asking for you through a regular agenda item to review and potentially ratify a resolution that will incorporate the declaration and all the other actions, including maybe any spending authorization that might be needed. So that's a next step that you would actually be involved in, and it would be part of your approval process. But as of today, I believe, Mr. Adams, we've done what we need to do to continue on until that, until we're completed or almost completed, and that resolution then is, requires action of this council.
Is it appropriate to keep our steps?
Yes.
Orderly and clear and for the public, as far as transparency goes?
And at this point also, if I might, Mr. Mayor Protem, I do not have any need to ask the council for any additional spending authority above the spending authority that you have given us through the current budget process or to me individually for individual contracts that may come up that have not yet. So that would also require me to come in front of you if I needed to have spending authority in the current budget process beyond what we've done so far. So we're going to stretch it a little bit as far as we have to go do this under what you approved in your budget, and as we get farther in the year, and if something else pops up, then we may need to come back. But for right now, we're within our spending authorities, we're within our operational authorities, and we have followed state law as far as what we can do about what we've acted on and how we have provided information to.
Okay. Good. Mr. Dare?
I wanted to say, just as a newer City, City Council member, I got to watch all this happen, and if you're a citizen out there from Sparks, I want you, you should be very proud of our staff, but also our community. Businesses stepped up, people stepped up, and really, one of my big questions beyond Big Adder Boy and all that good stuff was, it was fantastic to watch and be a part of, is we do have, some of the circles I'm in are looking to how to help, how to help, and obviously, sometimes some of their help can get in the way and cause more problems. So do you have any direction that you can give if anybody's watching, and how can they help? How can our citizens help during this recovery time? Because some of them really want to get out and help businesses, but we also don't want them in danger in any fashion.
Thank you for the question. That is one of the most difficult things that we have, especially with, with floodwaters, because they're dangerous for a variety of reasons. On the city's website, we have information as far as what's going on, and we share in mapping and others. Also, I believe it's on there, and if it's not, it will be by five o'clock, there should be information for hotline, helpline for Red Cross. Red Cross, we use Red Cross as the agency to deal with donations and volunteerism. So as far as people wanting to help or people wanting to donate, we let them do it, they're, they're in that business, they know best how to deal with it. Typically, people power is important in certain realms, we may be past that now, sandbagging and some of that goes. Donations typically in events like this, because you don't really know what's needed, they in the past have typically asked for cash to work, and especially to go through them for, they use it for several things. They use it for the sheltering, they're responsible for the shelters that we have up running right now, there are two shelters that are open, they're, they also work with themselves and the Salvation Army and others for the food for shelters and the food for us if we, if we need that. So they're the best agency for us, they're really ready to go at a moment's notice, they have their own staffing that can, you know, get onto this right away. So if people are so inclined, and we would certainly appreciate both volunteer time and donations if they can work through the Red Cross, and if that number's not on the website, it will be shortened. I believe it's already there.
And where do they take their hundred and seventy-five thousand sandbags?
That's part of what we will work with when it's done. We will then provide information for what you do with them there. As you can appreciate, any sandbag that has been touched by water, we automatically assume any floodwater is contaminated. Now, we don't say what it's contaminated with, because we don't have the slightest idea, but we just assume and we treat it that way, and so it becomes kind of a hazardous material cleanup, and so we will, through the Emergency Operations Center, we will put information out to the public within the next week or so as to how it goes, because right now, a lot of people, while they're pulling sandbags down, they will stack them real close to where they pulled them down from, just in case it comes back around, because we are going to get some more weather. It's supposed to be snow instead of rain, but you never know.
Okay, anyone else? You know, for me, being Mayor Protem, I have to, part of my job is to fill in for Gino when he can't make it. I know he planned his surgery right around this, this flood, but, so I've been there since Thursday, maybe even Wednesday afternoon, working with the, the professionals that Sparks has working for us. This is our third flood in twenty years, and we almost had one in two thousand and twelve, and if it wasn't for a change in the temperature up in Truckee, we were fifteen minutes from another flood in two thousand and twelve. You know, every company, every organization, and you know this, has a disaster plan, and when you have an earthquake, you go to that page that says, earthquake, here's your contacts, and those contacts haven't worked for the company for ten years. This disaster plan for the City of Sparks is a living document, they do it every month, and there's nothing more evident than watching them work for the last four or five days, and watching, watching them come together as a team, working together, communicating everything that they're doing. Steve, you led, you led the effort, we had finance there, we had attorneys there, you always have to have attorneys there, but we had everybody in the city working together, you know, in one direction, and I'm so proud of what they did. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to lead this team of professionals.
Thank you. Okay. Any more comments? The police department did okay. I'm not quite sure. The fire department was there, they were on top of it.
We're going to have to work on expectations.
Yeah. Now, I don't want any police officers calling me, okay? That's just, you're right.
Yeah, this is an inside joke.
Yeah, this is an inside joke. Okay, we'll move on to comments from the public. I'll open up for public comment, anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, comments from City Council and City Manager. Any, anything? Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do have an announcement. The following committee appointments are available. Western Nevada Development District, two members for a two-year term, there is a qualification, two private citizens involved in business, industry, professions, or education shall be appointed by the Sparks City Council to serve on the Western Nevada Development District Board for a two-year term. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then you would move to clicking on Filling Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, February seventeenth at five p.m. Thank you.
Okay, you know, and I want to jump in here also, because I forgot to mention something when we were talking about the flood. There's, there's a couple of people that I want to thank real quick. This is by no means a complete list of everybody that jumped in for the city, but CB Concrete, I want to thank them, they brought out a cement truck and gave us an innovative way to, to fill sandbags, it was just awesome, I couldn't believe they did that. McDonald's supplied some breakfast fours and some meals, Target supplied some things with sanitizer and things that we needed out in the field, and then of course, Councilman Abbott and the Drone Store supplied the footage that you'll see on our Facebook page. Wonderful. Okay. Ms. Bybee?
Actually, you just mentioned what I was going to, wanted to give a big thank you to Councilman Abbott and the Drone Store. If you have not gone on to Facebook, there are four videos, four drone videos that have gone viral, and it is like, for me sitting at home this morning, kind of feeling helpless on what could I do, and what did it really look like, and we were still waiting for it to crest, for me to hop on Facebook and find those, and to be able to see that aerial view of the entire city and the damage that was there, but the damage it wasn't, was, was just incredible, and also to help with Councilman Abbott, to also help in trying to share the message with people to not go down there. So to keep people, to keep people off the river, out of, out of our emergency personnel's way was incredibly important, it gave people the information they needed, and I will like to thank the citizens for their cooperation through the whole weekend of not getting in the way, of not, of letting, letting the city do their job, and that's super important, but great video, you've got to go check it out and share it, because it's, I, I'm interested to see how many, how many people have seen it by now, because I haven't looked at it for a few hours, so check it out. Thank you so much, Donald.
I think it was over a hundred thousand hits, wasn't it?
Yeah, we were just looking at one video, it reached two hundred and twenty thousand for a camera tool.
Amazing, amazing.
So yeah, great job to Justin and the Drone Store.
And this guy's sick, and he's out in the cold and everything else, so.
City first.
Yeah, good man. Any other comments? Okay, move for adjournment. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.